Sylvain Neulie.
Sylvain Neulie, yeah, he's, yeah. People love him.
Sylvain Neulie.
Yeah. All very happy.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. One quick announcement, Mrs. Rajat will not be here. And let's start off with, can I adopt a motion to adopt an agenda? Mr. Guber first, Mrs. Hoffman second. All in favor? Okay, let's start with Board of Education comments. Opportunity for members to report on updates related to their respective committee assignments and discuss matters from a policy perspective. Anybody up here? Go ahead.
So, one of the new items on the budget this year was the addition of the high school pep band. The pep band's having their first performance on Friday during the homecoming performance.
Yay. Exciting. High school partnership has met a couple of times. We're putting together a great set of goals for this coming year, and we're just finalizing some things, and I will report back.
So, there's several committees. I will just be very brief with each of them. IPAC kicked off yesterday, and it was essentially to discuss the process for which we follow, and went over the calendar, what we're going to be doing the rest of the year. So, it was just to get our Baring Street type of a committee. Our audit committee was last week, and that committee, well, we'll discuss all that on the agenda later. So, I will save my comments, but I just wanted to point out that the committee is overseen by Mrs. Whitmore Chase, and that the committee members include myself, Mike Walsh, and Lauren Grabowski, and that, actually, no, I'll save that piece for later. The Policy Committee also met in September. We're going to be going over the things that we reviewed at that meeting for the first reading tonight. Tomorrow, Thursday, we have our next meeting, and that you will see later in about a month out for our first reading. But the ones tonight, the highlights for tonight are the violence in schools. We have policy that you'll see specific to that, and also the immunization of students. The other, we did review quite a few policies. The changes, I would say, are less significant for those. And I was at the teacher tenure earlier, but Dan is going to talk about that later. And that's it.
Just a real quick update. We had our first facilities meeting of the year last week, and I'm not going to get into all the details, because we're going to have some additional presentations coming up in the next several board meetings. We highlighted the construction that's happened so far, which we're all aware of. We talked about what still has to happen here in 1920, including the signage, which will be starting, the external signage will start this fall and go as far as, until the ground freezes. So, we'll start to see the external signage, which is great. Summer of 2020, we have some more construction coming up with the tech wing, and then using the Smart Schools Bond Act. We'll be doing some enhancements, including security enhancements and phone system. And then additionally, we didn't get into too many details. This is still a work in progress, but we are looking at a potential referendum for 2020, potentially the same time as our school board, so, our school board vote, excuse me. So, more to come on that in the next couple of board meetings. So, that's it.
I was actually out of town all last week, but I would like to actually bring forth a topic for the board. I have no specific or special knowledge in this area. It was, it has been in the paper. Board of Regents are looking at graduation requirements. And usually, when something like this happens, the district leadership and everybody involved in the district is way ahead of me anyway, you know, already working on it. But I just wanted to express a desire or wish that, since they're going to have hearings in each of the judicial districts that are represented by a Regents, that I hope that we will be represented there, and that we will put together a package. They're looking at different ways possibly of assessing people, portfolio versus Regents or some other means. They're looking at alternative requirements, perhaps in the career and technical area versus the purely academic area. And, you know, I think we probably have something worthwhile to contribute. And I, they're giving, they're actually saying they want to hear from us, and so, we have a lot of good minds here, a lot of good ideas, and I hope we'll take advantage of it.
So, that's, that, when you say you hope that someone from the district will be there, do you mean administration or fellow board members, or both, to be there with you for the hearings?
For hearings, yeah.
So, this is something we could go to?
Hoping that we will have representation at those.
Okay, all right. I'd like to go. So, if you could keep me in the line.
Well, we can attend.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just wanted to mention today, at Orangian, we recognized 28 tenured teachers. It was, it's really a wonderful event to sit there, and we have the administrators there to speak. And Jill invited five fellow teachers to come and share their experiences with what they've experienced through Shen thus far, since the beginning of their teaching time. Some of them were newly tenured as well. So, it was really great to hear their stories. They were so enthusiastic. They were really engaged, and it was just, it just, it was really, really great. So, I just want to say congratulations to those 28. And like I said, you know, we look forward, and I think they're all ready. They've already hit the ground running. They're, they're present with our, with our kids, with our community, and as I said to them, I hope they stay that way. And it was just, it was really a great event, so, congratulations to them.
Two things for me. Policy meeting, I went through it last month with Mrs. Hoffman. I think this is, as a committee meeting, is getting better year after year. A lot more upfront work being done, and very important that you can actually, on our website, go see the schedule of future policy discussions. It's down to the number, so you can easily search the number within the policy and just get an idea of what the next set of board meetings we'll talk about, or the next set of policy meetings we'll talk about. But very good on terms of transparency. You know, several years ago, folks in the community thought that we weren't, and typically, I thought we were, but now it's even more transparent as to what will be discussed at these meetings in the future. So, thanks, thanks for continuing that effort. It speaks highly of the approach we're taking, and allows people, if they want to prepare, be more prepared, they certainly can, but they can also simply read the first reading items as well. So, I think we're covering that one in terms of transparency to future policy changes very well. Second thing is, I saw this two weeks ago in The Times Union on a Sunday edition regarding capital region, school districts, really taking a good look at moving the high school start hours back. We've had some discussions with different board members, a lot of it, I think, very, very good exchanges of the puts and takes. I've seen some of the other discussions in other districts, and again, I'm several steps away. I wasn't at those meetings, but in some cases, people take a very passionate view of, you know, of an early start. There's a lot of changes that have to happen if you want to change your high school start time, and I think this article represents that very well. There's a table in the back of the newspaper article, and it's up here for board members if you want to take a look at it. But, you know, we're not below average, we're slightly above average in terms of start time relative to other districts. We're not, we're not starting at 7:00 a.m. There's another district in the capital region that is. Okay, so that does create challenges. I think there's also a lot of studies out there. Sometimes they, they get kind of overstated in terms of the start time, because I think there's a lot of other factors as to why people may not be learning. And I think, I think the comments we, that I've heard from board members is, let's really listen and see what other districts are doing. What's the impact? What, what does it bring? What does it take away? And I think the article can convey that as well. So, something to watch out for as districts take a look at this, at the NISBA session in about three weeks. I will try to talk to some other board members and see how they're, you know, how they're taking it, because I think this is a good point of discussion that we want to continue. That's it for me. So, let's turn it over to public comments. I think we have some of our students in the back that are coming up and why they do that, why they'll do that. It's an opportunity for the board public to address the Board of Education. I need residents in attendance. If so, please complete the comment form. The board will not address specific comments, but ask for your name and address in the event follow-up is necessary. The board reminds residents that the public comments portion of our meeting is only one item on a long agenda. Therefore, we ask each member to be succinct as possible. Remarks go into two to three minutes. We also expect residents to speak in respect of a courteous manner, so as to model proper civility and decorum for our students. Residents may also contact the board by email at bohnet.org. All questions come to the Office of Public Information and are shared with the board and superintendent as appropriate. Policy questions and concerns are to be addressed to the board president. Operational questions and concerns are to be addressed to superintendent and or designated. So, that's the start. Go ahead, please, with your comments.
Hi, my name is Elena Tremblay. And again, I'm Joyce Phoebe, and we are the representatives to the Board of Education through SFA Senate. The past month, Senate has been very busy planning our homecoming dance. The dance will occur next weekend on Saturday. There's been a lot of confusion surrounding specifically what the theme will be. Originally, we had masquerade, but that was not approved by administration, so our finalized theme will be simply homecoming. In addition, our spirit rally will take place this Friday, ninth period. Senate has been very busy painting all the posters and planning how teams are going to go where. So, once again, we invite all members present to come to our spirit rally this Friday. It will start around 1:30 at the turf, and also to our homecoming dance, all members present. And if you have any high schoolers in your household or neighborhoods to come, it'll be October 19th from 7:00 to 10:00, and even if you can't make the whole time, we'd love to see there.
Tickets are $15, which includes food and ice cream bar from Stewart's.
And we have one of our students performing and DJing, too. Yeah.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else that would like to make a public comment? If not, we'll turn it over to Dr. Robinson and superintendent's report.
Sure. Before going into some information items, just want to remind you of some upcoming events. Tomorrow, first of all, no school students, the Jewish holiday tomorrow. District office and other personnel will be around, but not for student and large instructional staff. We have the Hall of Fame induction ceremony on Thursday at 5:00. It's a dual event that's going to conflict a little bit with also the Green and White Awards. That's at the high school at 6:30, so I know some board members will be attending one or the other. I'll be at the beginning of the Hall of Fame and coming to the Green and White Awards afterwards. So, there's two events, upcoming events, and as the two student rep mentioned, it is homecoming week. It's been a big spirit week. I think yesterday was, today was comfy clothes or something to that effect, and Cameron wore his favorite comfy clothes. You know, that's comfortable for him, his jacket and blazer, that's comfortable. And so, for the rest of the week, they have a different theme going every day, and so it's always exciting to see the kids have that kind of spirit, and certainly, it's probably a big event. So, as the two young ladies said, encourage people to come out and be a part of that piece of it as well. So, that was the exciting part. So, thank you, ladies. Appreciate it very much. The, I'll just keep going with the two presentations. So, I have Mrs. Chase come forward, and we have two financial-related presentations tonight. One is our independent audit report, and we have our wonderful auditors here who will share some good news with us. And also, Mrs. Chase, after that, will talk about our claims audit report and some specific things that we had the claims audit look at this past year, and some things that we found out, and some corrective actions that we're going to take to move forward, because as you see on the agenda later on, we'll be asking not only for the approval and acceptance of the external audit report, but also for our internal audit report and corrective actions as we move forward as well, to ensure that, once we get to the claims audit portion, Mrs. Hoffman, who sits on that committee, will probably have some questions and our comments to contribute to Mrs. Chase's comments. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you to make the introductions again.
Okay. So, our independent auditors, Cuzak and company, we have Jim Cuzak and Jason Mara. They work very closely with us over the summer as we get our financial statements put together. Kudos to Becky Hull, Joanne Hammond, and the financial staff. They're really getting it down to a science as far as the timeline goes, but it's really a team effort. So, with that, I will turn it over to Jim Cuzak.
Thank you. Just to give everybody an update, last week, we met with Naomi in the Audit Committee meeting. We reviewed the audit results, operating results in detail. So, what I'll do is tonight is just summarize some of the highlights. It is, Kathy, it is a monumental task. They prepare information for us. We have a large request list. They do a phenomenal job being very well-prepared for the audit. Makes our life a lot easier. We ask a lot, we audit a lot, and they are very well-prepared. So, I just thought I'd like to start the meeting with that. There are no accounting or reporting changes this year. It's the same main financial statements. The district's financial statements are under two accounting methods. Governmental funds, modified accrual basis, full accrual basis for the government-wide. We, the management's discussion and analysis is the first 14 pages. It really does highlight your operating results. It gives you results, budget to actual results this year versus last year, and also some trends going forward. So, very good document to read. Our opinion is pages 15 to 17, in which we issued an unmodified opinion, and what that means is your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It takes a lot to get to that point. It's a lot of work, but we're pleased to report that again. And we have later reports. Jason's going to touch on the federal programs that also are unmodified, highest level of assurance that they're accurate, okay? So, I mentioned the financial statements are under two methods. The first method, the full accrual method, are pages 18 to 20. And if you look at the details on page 20, it shows you what converts. In other words, the government-wide financial statements have things like capital assets, long-term debt, and the governmental funds financial statements don't have those categories. The revenue and expense impact is reflected on pages 21 to 22 for the governmental funds. And again, on page 22, they show the details of what's different between the two sets of financial statements. Things like depreciation expense are in the government-wide financial statement, but not in the governmental funds financial statement. The payment of debt is considered an expense in the governmental funds, but it's not. It's a payment of debt in the full accrual. So, that'll give you on page 22 the differences on the revenue and expense side. Three or four areas I thought I would highlight that really stand out to me is the excellent job your district does in managing your reserves. You've added to your reserves, you've used your reserves when needed, you've replenished those reserves, so I think your district does an extremely good job. The ending reserves are a little over $2 million higher this year. A lot of that is set aside money in the debt service fund. The other thing you have do an excellent job is in debt management. This year, you had no bond anticipation, no borrowing for buses. Instead, you used $2.2 million of your current funds to pay the buses, so you're saving the district and the taxpayers' interest in the future by being able to do that. Your serial bond debt is extremely low for a district this size. It's just slightly short of $38 million. And there's an expression, the constitutional debt limit, that's what you're allowed to borrow. Your district is only at 7%. And I'd say that that's probably one of the lowest in the state in terms of the size of your district and the amount of outstanding debt that you have that effectively will be absorbed in terms of future interests that has to be passed along. The other area is, I started to mention in the beginning, but the accounting department, the accounting systems, the control systems are the best. I mean, they're excellent. And they, this is, we have six districts, OCSs, that we represent. This is the only district that does prepare their own financial statements. They have that ability to do that, and I think that it's, you should be very proud of the fact that they have that ability in that finance department. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jason, and he's going to talk a little bit about the federal programs.
Okay, so yes, in addition to your financial statement audit that Jim was just talking about, there's also a federal audit piece. With any entity that has over $750,000 of federal funds, which Shen does, there's a federal compliance audit that's also prepared the same time that we're out there. Like Jim mentioned, the federal audit was also an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of opinion that you can receive. When we get into the federal audit piece of the, of the audit, there is the financial aspect of it, of looking at transactions, and then there's the compliance aspect of it as well. So, it's a little more in-depth of an audit, audit level of testing than just the financial statement audit alone. Your total federal funds, the federal audit starts off on page 75 with our, with the audit reports and kind of goes forward from there. The total federal funds for the year was roughly $3.6 million. Of that, we have to, we're required to rotate major funds to audit as our top major fund for the year, and for 1819, it was the school lunch fund. So, we work very closely with, in addition to the finance office, we work very closely with Katie, the food service director. And the, the amount of time it took to answer our requests and provide me samples, whether it was from the business office or the food service department, it was, I mean, it was same-day turnaround. So, it was, you know, we have a fairly short amount of time that we're here. You know, the, you have a junior end, we're here in August, and that turns into the financials to an October 15 reporting, so there's not a lot of downtime to provide information. So, all of that went great. The results of the federal audit, there were no material weaknesses, there were no significant deficiencies, and we're required to report if there are any question costs that are in excess of $25,000. Not only were there not any in excess of $25,000, but I don't, I didn't come up with any findings at all. So, it was a, it was a very clean audit. The school lunch gets rotated in and out roughly every other year, so I have some history with Katie, and she knows what I expect and vice versa, so it works out really well. Katie and Becky and the team and Kathy, everyone is really great to work with, from our, you know, the few days we're here during doing our preliminary testing, to the field work, to the financial statement wrap-up. It's just, it's a great experience all around.
We also are required to audit the extra classroom activity accounts, and there's a number of accounts within the district, and that's also included in the reporting. And again, another unmodified opinion. We had one minor housekeeping comment related to the extra classroom activities, but it was a, it was a very good, very good audit, very good operating results, and I guess if I gave you a report card, I'd say you have an A+.
Okay. So, I just want to add, I think that Cuzak can do that. You do a very, you do an amazing job, the work, working with staff here. I think Kathy and her team, it was reflected in the, in the fact that there were no interruptions. It was seamless. I know it is a monumental effort to do this. The other thing I wanted to add is that they do sit in on the other meetings where internal audit will do a risk assessment, and they'll talk about areas of the district that they're going to do reviews of, and their concerns. They sit on those meetings. They, they also work with those auditors so that, you know, later you'll hear, or if you review the audits that are later on the agenda, you'll see that there are things that are being looked at. They consider all of that in their report, and if it's material, they have to report it out. And so, so, yes, there are things that you'll hear later, but none of them have a material effect at all on the financials.
That's right.
And so, I, I think it's, it's a beautiful process to watch. You, you're very knowledgeable, you can answer all the questions that are raised, and so I appreciate all the sun by both teams, by Becky, Rebecca Hull, Joanna, who's usually not at those meetings, but I know she's behind the scenes, Anita Adamczyk, and Greg Mayo. It's, it's, am I forgetting someone? It's, it's, it's a very responsive team. You can see that they're, that they have an attention for detail, and that they're planning well ahead of time, because when, when these things happen, they seem to be seamless, and I'm, I'm impressed by that process, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to expand upon the other two audits that we reviewed, we also have a claims auditor who reviews every dispersment packet before a check is cut. So, that's a pretty intensive weekly process that we provide, all of our dispersments, and he actually audits them before we release the checks. And while there weren't significant findings there, there were a couple of items where the PO is issued after the invoice is received. That is something that we have always kind of dealt with on some level, as much as you try to issue the PO in advance of. Sometimes it's, you know, you're online, you're, you know, finding what you need, you place the order online, and then you do the PO after the fact. Again, the auditors didn't find that there was anything inappropriate, even though some of those steps may have been done out of sequence. But there weren't, there weren't a lot of findings of that nature, but there were a couple that were reported in the reports. Was there anything that you wanted to get out about?
No, I was just going to comment on the internal audit, separate from the claims audit.
So, the internal audit is done by another auditor. We actually contract with Questar three OCSs, and Ken Zabrowski provided the overview on these two audits. One of these was actually started in 2018, and that was the security of student information. And we worked with the IMS department. With those findings, they created a corrective action report, and in the first round, if you will, there were some issues trying to get the information out of the student information system. So, they were only able to audit a portion of the sample items that they had had. So, we had them come back and basically finish auditing their sample at some point this last year, and they actually sat with one of the folks in the IT department and went through the actual software system and looked them up online with Samantha, I believe. So, there were no findings of that nature, but it did span a couple of years, just because we were trying to complete the entire process and have some closure on that. There were a couple of findings there. Disaster recovery was one of the issues, which will be addressed in our Smart Schools Bond Act capital project that is in process with SED. There were some issues with software, mainly apps, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, trying to ensure that information is secured on all levels, and that's something that we've reviewed and discussed further based on those findings. Is there anything you wanted to add about that report?
So, yeah. So, with the disaster recovery plan, they, there is one, but it's out of date, which was essentially the feedback from the review, but they are backing up critical systems, which was the key piece. And then the other side of it was, and I wanted to mention this, is that, well, and also that the smart bond act, some of the improvements, the reason why it's not fully up-to-date is because it's part of the smart fund act funding. But on the, the other side of it, you know, what we talked about, you probably saw in NISBA about being a spike in ransomware cases where viruses attack systems and the like. So, so we raised that to the audit committee, and so it was specific about phishing attempts and the like. And what they said is they did look at that, and I was happy that they looked and they asked those questions. And they came back, and what was important was that there was, there was no actual breaches reported. And so, we are relieved, but it is something that now, I, I believe that there's a higher level of sensitivity to that, especially since there is a spike in New York State of that happening. But that was the only other thing I wanted to mention is that they, that are, and with the scope limitation, it turned, the response from the team there, I didn't necessarily see it in the minutes, but was that, it was, they believe it was a miscommunication, or at least that's what IMS for that scope limitation. And they were able to actually look through the record, as you pointed out, of all the users that were not part of that original sample. So, so for me, they're moving forward on those, those, the sensitive issues like the disaster recovery and protecting the systems from attacks, and the student ID information, that there's some laws that are in the hopper right now in New York State. They're watching that closely, and I know that they're going to share that with Rebecca, because there'll be some policy changes with specific to personal identifiable information, right?
Correct.
And that was it for that, for that audit, yes.
And then the other internal audit area that we actually requested to be audited this year was our leaves of absence. And as you know, when we do our year-end report, we report quite a number of leaves of absences across all bargaining units and all groups of employees. So, because every situation is different, it touches quite a number of people. So, because every situation is different, it touches quite a number of people in a number of departments. You know, the initial report could come from a building or a department, it may come from the principal, it may come from the secretary. That information comes to either our benefits person and/or HR, which may be Jill, it may be someone else in HR. At some point, it comes to our benefits person with regard to health insurance, and if it's payroll withheld, it'll go to our payroll, payroll department to rectify. If it's not, then it will go to our accounts receivable area to bill and rectify. And there's an attendance component, what gets reported, what's covered, you know, the beginning and ending dates of all of those coinciding and, and, you know, meshing together. So a lot of departments and a lot of people involved in that process. We knew we had some weaknesses in that area, so we wanted to have some input from our auditors before we started really putting together a process to make sure that we were hitting upon the areas that really needed to be controlled and brought into kind of a cohesive process. So while there was a sample of fifty employees, there were six different types of findings, I believe. Some of them were paper not being in the file, doesn't mean that the paper didn't exist, it just didn't exist in the personnel file. Sometimes there was a mismatch of when health insurance began and ended, although all of that has been recouped. Charging of time, there was one instance of that where leave time extended beyond, I think, I think it was a paid leave of absence, and charge time was overlapping. So again, just some things that we had to clarify among our own process, so it's going to help us really put together, I think, a very robust process. And more importantly, we are, we have addressed all of those issues, and whether it resulted in a loss of time or financial impact, all of those things have been corrected, except for one retiree who I think had a half a month of health insurance that we're still trying to recoup, but everything else has been rectified and the district made whole, so.
Again, the board would be asked to not only approve the audit reports, but also, as you notice on here, to correct the plan that goes with those audit reports as well.
And again, I thought Bosse's, Questar Bosse's team, I thought they did a good job with the, with reporting back and also following up with the, with the other one, the IMS one. Thank you.
I just have an observation, I was thinking, you know, when you talk about the volume of transactions, the tremendous number of dollars involved and so forth, it's, it strikes me as phenomenal that we are able to operate with such a minimal number of mishandlings or, you know, discrepancies and so forth, and it's, it's so human to do something like that. It's, so it's phenomenal. At the same time, I'm thinking, we spend a lot of time and energy trying to identify all of this. And I, I guess the financial world is different than some other aspects of, say, business world, because I can remember working on construction, and guys would hit, mishit a nail, and they'd go flying. By the end of the day, you might have a couple dozen nails lying on the floor. They didn't recover them, they swept them up, it wasn't worth the time, energy, and labor to pick them up. So I'm, you know, is there any element of that, I mean, you have, do you have any latitude? Do you say, well, geez, we're, we're only off by fifteen dollars?
There's the rammer here.
Do we spend fifty dollars to find it?
But, but I could add this, is that they're, they're just taking a sample, right? And it's just to see if there are problems. So, so the sample, if you were to blow that up, could be a lot more of the same type of thing. So it's, the, the purpose is to tighten up internal controls and to make the process run a little bit smoother, so you have fewer nails. But not necessarily to identify all the nails in your example, know what I mean?
Right. It is more of a process, cross-check and balance. You know, sometimes the errors might be small, but sometimes they're not so small. So without the check and balance, you know, you have to be able to at least identify it, and, you know, if it's a few dollars, perhaps we don't correct it necessarily, we write it off, but, you know, you never want to miss those big ones, so.
So, thank you, Kath. Just to, as Dr. Wood come forward, just to put this whole thing in context, as well as Elizabeth's presentation on grants, I shared with the board, Business First is a, similar to the Business Review in Albany area, the, the similar magazine out of the Buffalo, Western New York area, and they always do this pretty extensive analysis of school districts, the four hundred and thirty-one, what they call upstate school district, and basically anything north of the Tappan Zee kind of thing. And, and I particularly pay attention to that. The Business Review typically only do the eighty-three school districts within the, the capital region. And so we look at that, it's great, but I was kind of figuring, how do we then, as a school district, compare when we look at a larger sample size? And I shared some data with you. But one related to this that we often, I kind of take some pride in looking at, because I think speaks to the, the work of everyone within the school district, what I call this kind of efficiency rating, when we look at what we spend in comparison to the out, output that we generate, so to speak. And out of the four hundred and thirty-one school districts, there was only three of the school districts that was more quote-unquote efficient, cost-effective, I think that's the word they use. And so, so when we look at that, I think it kind of goes back to Mr. Delalo's point, we don't necessarily even worry about people wasting the nails, because we hope that people have the mindset that they won't want to waste the nails. And so, so therefore, we don't have to worry about having people watching people wasting the nails, because hopefully the culture of the organization is one such that if people realize it's the wrong nails, somebody's going to say, stop buying them, because they're not working, and so we don't have to keep dealing with it. So, so I think speaks a lot to that, and I think our auditors alluded to that point, too, when you think about the, the capacity to, to do some things that many, many, many organizations, private sector or otherwise, or private sector can't do, that we do. And so it's kudos to the expertise that we have on board, in this case, finance led by, by Mrs. Chase. And it's also kudos to, quite frankly, to the Board of Education. And I, and I say this very, in the sense that I think sometimes as a board, you kind of take for granted your influence, because as a board, it's not a board that, that, that sit on soapbox issues, one issue kind of board, and perseverate on stuff that at the end of the day doesn't really make an impact on a larger organization. This is a board that really always talk about, how can we as a district as a whole always improve? And I think that sets the tone and tempo that, that certainly myself as superintendent and others, we take the lead from that, saying that if this is a board that expects for us all to be on our A-game, we should be all on our A-game. And, and when we're not, it's okay for someone to say that you're not, because expectation is that we're all on our A-game, and we're going to support people to, to be on, on top of their game, so to speak. So, so I say kudos to you. So every time we see, I see these kind of things, yeah, it's great, it's a financial report, and if people may translate finance to me, me, Mrs. Chase and her outfit, but this is a district, this is a report on the district in terms of how are we truly being good stewards of the resources that's invested by the community, not only local community, but community at large, in terms of state funds, as, or as you hear Ms., Mrs. Dr. Wood talk about federal funds. So kudos to you. So, so all those nails is because, you know, we say on the job site, we're going to do it right, and we're going to do it right all the time, and we're going to expect that people are going to do it right, and I think it shows in some of these results that you see here, not only tonight, but some of the other results that you often see from, from, from the various reports. So, so I appreciate that comment, Gary, and a great analogy, but it really put things in perspective. And so we talk about some of the federal funds, because we do get outside funds, outside of the state, and we try to be good stewards of those as well.
So we have about, the district anticipates receiving about two point seven million in federal funds this year, and I say anticipates because it isn't always that, you know, you open up your allocation and that it's sitting there as, you know, dispersed to your district as of yet. But when you get your allocation, you are required to outline for, we reported to the state education department, but they are really the extension of the federal government in this case, how we anticipate spending the money. And then once we send in that information for the two special education grants, it's end of June deadline for, for our office, the Title I, II, III, both threes and fours, the deadline is August thirty-first. And so in some cases, like for the Title III immigrant grant funds, we did not receive notification of what that allocation was until the, I think it was the late teens of August. But then we're working to figure out what, what, what are the best ways that we can allocate this funding, get it submitted to the department by the deadline. And then once we hear back that our plan has been approved, then we can begin the expenditures. It is tightly regulated. Each one of these categories has its own, each grant code has its own categories and its own set of regulations about how we can expend it. I would say one of the best things the state department did, the state education department in the last couple of years, they've given us a guidance document that says this is permissible under this grant and this is not, and it's been extremely helpful, because sometimes the big broad language leaves you with questions. I will say, we have always erred on the very conservative side, making sure that what we're identifying for expenditures, we know our well within the established parameters of the grant. For Title I, these funds are intended to be used to improve student achievement. There is a very interesting formula that the state has us using, which is, we have to figure out our midpoint average for the school district for free and reduced lunch. So I don't have it in my head, I'd say it was seventeen percent this year. You then rank all individual schools based on highest to lowest need, and anybody above your midpoint then is designated as a Title I school. And so I struggle sometimes when I hear people say, well, we're a Title I school. Well, Title I school in Shenandoah is not the same as a Title I school in, say, Bethlehem, and it's not the same as a Title I school in Schenectady, or Waterfleet, or any comparable, because it's all based as a relative mark of whatever the district's average is. So you take those, those funds, and then you disperse them above your fifty percent mark. We actually saw some movement for the first time in several years on which schools were qualifying this year, although we had seen that it was likely that Arrendo was no longer going to qualify. And as Arrendo fell below that fifty percent mark, Acadia moved above the fifty percent mark, in part because of the location of some of our special education programs, and some students who are automatically qualified by their disability. So it's really a complex formula, but once you have it figured out, then you know this is where we're able to allocate the Title I funds for additional staffing. And I will say, most of those funds go toward additional AIS staffing, because we do have that service follows need. We also have, the, the Title I schools, particularly at the elementary level, have additional slots in our summer literacy program, they have additional access to the ENL programs, to the kindergarten jumpstart, to try to level access out to our specialized programs. The Title II grant is based on professional development, teacher and principal professional development, and we do fund a lot of our professional development staffing out of the Title II grant. You'll notice that the, the first column there gives the total allocation, the next is the change based on last year. And so we did see favorable increases in both Title I and Title II this year. In addition to professional development staffing, we also are able to fund some summer curriculum work out of the Title II grant. Title III immigrant grant, that was the one that we were waiting on, and that, that one we've seen fluctuate much more year to year. In fact, it's been somewhat challenging to plan. So Sarah Choffey and I have met, and we typically kind of start by planning backwards. We start with the Title III L grant, and we are able to put a lot of our summer programming into the Title III L, which we know we want to be able to rely on. In fact, this summer, and you'll hear it in two weeks when we do the presentation on summer programming, we were able to expand the six twelve ENL summer supports this last year, which is, I think, very useful to the students who are going into very content-heavy courses as they, you know, needing to acquire stronger English in order to really understand concepts such as earth science, or higher level math, or, you know, a lot of the US history courses, where they may not have as much background, certain students may not have as much background. So we start by funding the summer program, and then when we're notified of the immigrant funds, we then think about what are some of the additional ENL supports that we can offer in our ENL classrooms, materials, supplies for teachers, professional learning opportunities. And then for Title IV, this was new to the district last year. We are pleased to see we had an allocation again this year. It is based, it's kind of a broad title, a broad area for us to provide additional support, student support and academic enrichment. We have looked at our district goals and thought, where are the areas where we could really benefit by an additional financial support? And a lot of our equity work in the last year, going to the, sending, we sent a nice team to the Albany Regional Conference on diversity and inclusivity, and also last summer to Ithaca for diversity and inclusivity work, and we anticipate doing similar outreach. And it's amazing the impact. It's one thing to send one person to a conference, it's another when you're able to send fifteen, and they have a common shared experience, and then they're so interested in it, they really want to talk with each other and move that work forward. So we've really been able to gain some traction by clustering that in support of a top priority in the district of working toward greater equity and outcomes for all students. The special education, section six eleven and six nineteen are special education grants, and that's why Mrs. Mylott is on hand. The section six eleven is the, the big broad K-12 special education. A great deal of that money goes to support staffing in programs, equipment, specialized equipment for students and specialized programs, and professional development for our teachers. Section six nineteen is a special education pre-K and kindergarten, and there is staffing in there as well, like a portion of the CPSC chair position, a portion of some of the psychologists, mileage to some of the preschool visits. But again, we're always looking at what is, what are permissible expenditures, and how do we code them appropriately, so that when the day the audit comes, you know, we, we can make sure we, we clear easily.
Is the MOVE program and like EDK part of six eleven, or no?
EDK is not. EDK is an AIS, a general, so AIS support, which we could fund out of Title I, but MOVE would be.
Great, so the, the staffing is not included in MOVE, but a lot of the equipment that we purchase, which is very expensive equipment for our students and any specialized curriculum.
So what is the percentage, the sheer district-wide for Title I? Did it go up?
Off the top of my, I'm thinking we were about seventeen percent, but that's just going off my, my memory, which is actually like more than twice as wealthy as the average school district in New York State. Not, not wealthy by any stretch, but above, above average. Where, you know, most schools are in the fifty percent range, if you, if you look online, that's the average.
It seems like there was a lot of publicity at one point in time that, from, at the federal level, that there was going to be cuts in many title programs. It doesn't seem to show up here.
Two years ago, we did see a decrease, maybe it was three now, in Title I, but it wasn't really substantial. And I don't have a good explanation as to why. I did not hear colleagues in other districts talking about substantial reductions, so I don't know if our area, our, our area was already determined to not be as overfunded as, you know, the federal government perceived, or how the state was going to allocate, but we didn't see a major adjustment. I will say, it is challenging when you're getting your allocations, sometimes August one, August fifteenth, to budget when, and I know the, the special education grants, we often don't get those numbers until close to when we have to report, and they're, it's outside the budget cycle very often. And so if you're looking at shortfalls and making it up, you have to think very carefully about how you're planning to use those funds.
Okay, policies.
Good evening.
First reading policy and procedures, go ahead, please.
Before I actually get into the policies for first reading, I just want to share our emergency response guide. I'll just pass it, if you just want to look at it, I definitely need to make sure that I get that back. I'm sharing that with you. As part of our continued safety here at Shenandoah, we have developed this emergency response guide, which we're also referring to as the emergency flip chart. These, this is a quick reference guide that will be placed in common areas and have been placed probably eighty percent of the buildings at this point. It'll be done over the next few weeks, it'll be finalized. It's in all common spaces, classroom- It's in all common spaces, classrooms, libraries, offices, and the purpose of the guide is so that anybody who is in that classroom, whether it's a staff member, a sub, you know, teacher, a sub, a student, they are able to take the guide and look if they need to, to figure out what it is they need to do, or if they were in there alone for some reason, community members in the evening using our buildings. So there's a great variety of references in there and resources. So I wanted to share that with you. So for First Reading, we have, these are the policies that went to Policy Review Committee in September, and we have a few different policies, as you'll see here, some of them no real major changes, ones that we are reviewing as part of our schedule, 2019-20 schedule. And do you have any questions at this point?
No.
No.
We have Policy Review.
We have Policy Review on Thursday morning for October's policies. Thank you.
Let's move on to Consent Items. Treasurers' Report, can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman, second, Mrs. Stevenson, any comments? All in favor? And Motion on the Minutes, let's see if we can combine them, September 10th, September 24th.
Anybody here? Or Miss?
Yeah. Christina might not have been on.
Yeah, I think Mrs. Rajat may not have been one of them, but that, that should still not prevent us from voting. A motion from Mrs. Stevenson, second, Mrs. Hoffman, any comments, questions? All in favor to both meetings? Meeting minutes? Action items, we'll probably go through one by one, because they are separate and distinct. First is the acceptance of the external audit report, can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Gilbert, any comments, questions? All in favor? Second is acceptance of external audit corrective action plan, motion on this one, Mr. Gilbert. Second, Mrs. Hoffman, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor? And third is acceptance of internal audit reports and corrective action plan for student data and leaves of absence, motion on this one, Mrs. Hoffman, second, Mr. Gilbert, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor? Number four, bids, one, two of them combined, a low-dollar rental and football equipment reconditioning, can I get a motion on this one? Mrs. Stevenson, second, Mrs. Miller, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor? Number five, change order of court, motion on this one? Mrs. Stevenson, second, Mrs. Miller. Just a comment for me, you know, we talked about the nails not being wasted, this is an example of money that we can repurpose and move to, towards educational purposes within the district budget. So, a great example of what we're doing, basically are, we determine the estimated cost of a project, not, not as high as the actual cost, so therefore we can bring that money back in. Comment, motion?
Was this the one with the unused allowance?
Yeah.
Where they were using that, but it was because of a problem that popped up, they could use the allowance, correct, for the library? Is that this one?
It looked like it was a lesser amount being paid.
Oh.
Maybe.
Yeah, because of that, and cooking looked different.
Maybe cooking, oh, I see, okay. All right. That's awesome.
Okay. All in favor on the number seven, number five, change order? Okay.
No. Yeah, change order, of course, yeah.
Okay. Number six, contracted services, all language of captain, can I get a motion on this one? Mrs. Miller, second, Mr. Gilbert, comments, questions? All in favor? And number seven, donating, donation of fossils, motion on this one? Mr. Gilbert, second, Mrs. Hoffman, any comments, questions?
I was just going to say, I thought this was a really impressive donation, it was the entire collection of this, Mr. Eric Cashman, of fossils to Acadia, Buena, and Coda Middle Schools. And it's, it's extensive, I think the value is at 5,000, but the material, I think if you had to go out and buy it, would probably easily exceed that. But they're real fossils, they're, it's just a really impressive donation to the district. So, thank you, with gratitude.
All in favor, with gratitude? Okay. And number eight, intermunicipal agreement, Questar III BOSI's, can I get a motion on this one? Mrs. Stevenson, second, Mrs. Hoffman, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
It's just unannually.
Yeah. And number nine, revision, compensation and fees, can I get a motion on this one? Mrs. Stevenson, second, Mr. Gilbert, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor? And number 10, scholarship and local grant donations, motion on this one? Mrs. Miller, second, Mrs. Hoffman, any comments, questions? If not?
Gratitude.
With gratitude, all in favor? Okay, over to student acceptance of special education placements, Mrs. Mylott.
Do you have before you the recommendations from the Committee on Preschool and School Age Special Education?
Any comments? If not, motion on this one, Mr. Gilbert first, second, Mrs. Hoffman, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor? And let's go to staffing recommendations and transportation changes.
So, we did have one tenure recommendation. So Brian Sawyer is a teacher at Okte, this was a second tenure area, and I just would like to read a paragraph that Mrs. McElroy wrote as far as the tenure recommendation. After many years of being tenured special education teacher at Shenandoah, with great respect from his peers and administrators, we are fortunate to have Brian Sawyer educating our general education students in a kindergarten setting. Brian's transition to instructing larger groups of students who are building the foundation for their learning has been seamless and highly effective. Therefore, without hesitation, I strongly recommend Brian Sawyer for tenure as a general special education, I'm sorry, general education elementary teacher. So now we have the two tenure areas. And we had a few retirements that I'd like to make note of. Linda Whalen is an art teacher, she will be retiring end of day in January after 22 years. Joseph Gattano is a cleaner, he'll be retiring after 33 years with the district. Catherine Gervais, teacher aide, retiring after 26 years with the district. And Mary Ann Smith is retiring after 22 years, and she had a dual role of both cafeteria monitor and bus monitor. So those are retirements. Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's go, first three items together, can I have a motion on those first three? Mr. Gilbert, second, Mrs. Miller, any comments, questions? All in favor? And the tenure, let's treat that one as a separate, that's a fairly, that's a, it's a normal accomplishment to honor, recognize Mr. Sawyer for that. So can I have a motion on the tenure recommendation? Mrs. Miller, second, Mrs. Hoffman, any comments? If not, all in favor? Okay, that concludes the action items. Let's go to final public comments, I don't see anybody from the public here. So let's go to policy update, we've mentioned that one already, that's on Thursday, and can I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Hoffman, Mrs. Miller, second, all in favor to adjourn? Meeting adjourned, thank you.